I'd like to call this meeting to order, 6:31. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Amendments to the agenda.
Yes, members of the board, I'd like you to consider adding one item to the agenda under J, new business, nomination and confirmation of new staff.
We have motion?
I move that we amend the agenda by adding the following to J, new business, as recommended by the superintendent, nomination and confirmation of new staff.
I second that. Discussion. All those in favor? Item D, approval of minutes for the November 8, 2016 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 8, 2016, board meeting as presented.
I second that.
Discussion. All those in favor? Minutes of the November 22, 2016, special board meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the November 22, 2016, special board meeting as presented.
Discussion. All those in favor? Thank you. Item E, communications and correspondence.
I've circulated four letters of retirement/ resignation for the board's review, and I'll address them in my report.
Any other? Item F, public participation. Item G, administrative board reports. Mr. Clifford?
I'd like to start, it's not in my board report, but thanking members of the community for participating in our career day that we had on Wednesday. We had forty-eight presenters. We all met in cafeteria, or in cafeteria, in the theater, with our student body introduced everybody that was presenting that day and what they did. There were a lot of EHS alumni, and that was great to see them come back. And, like I said, forty-eight, and they ranged from, you know, plumbers to college coaches to college athletes to educators, and a wide variety. And the feedback from all the presenters were, "Our kids are excellent," and they were real excited to be there, and it went really well. So, and also kudos to Bev Homich and Hope High for putting that together. It's a ton of phone calls, a lot of emails, and organizing, and it went very well. Went really well. The Olympia Snow Leadership Program, which I introduced to you probably is the first time that you saw when you saw my board report, and we have five sophomores that are participating. They had an organizational session that was in September, and then they had their first conference, which was last month. And this is, schools from all over the state, the ones that were chosen, we're very lucky to be chosen, and that's going to continue for three years. It's a three-year commitment. And then hopefully, at the end of three years, we'll be chosen again. But feedback from Mrs. Cunnie, who's the advisor, is, it's gone very well, and the five students have been fantastic to work with. Our BAR visit is tomorrow, so we have a lady coming from St. Louis Park in Minneapolis, and she's spending the day with us. She'll sit in on the two freshman team meetings, first thing in the morning, then we'll have a risk review meeting that she'll sit in on, and then she'll go to a classroom and watch an iTime, and then she's meeting individually with teachers, and pretty much just to get some feedback on how it's going. And she'll give us feedback on the meetings and what we can do differently, and look at the Google Doc that we're using, and just give us information on that. So, I'm really looking forward to her feedback. And then she'll do a follow-up, either her or somebody else from St. Louis Park in the spring.
Could you, just for the viewing audience, Mr. Clifford, give a quick overview of what BAR is?
Sure. Billing asset, reducing risks, and that's the federal grant that our freshman team received. So it's for our freshman academy.
Thank you.
Yep. In Chicago, I know a lot of you were there over the last week and a half, and it was a terrific show. Kids did a great job. Pretty much every single night, the attendance was very good, and as you see, we had a ton of kids involved. So, very, very successful production. And our Holiday Arts Festival is this Thursday, and from 5:30 to 7:00 is the art show, and then at 7 o'clock to 8:30 is the holiday concert. So hopefully, you're free that night, and we'll see you there. Any questions or comments?
I just want to say, I attended two performances of Chicago, and was really very impressed by the performances of the students and the costumes and sets, and just the overall production was amazing.
Yeah, a lot of talented kids.
And I, I've been talking it up, so I saw it the first weekend, and then I was telling everyone I could, and I, some people came the second weekend who had no connection to the Ellsworth Schools. They just decided, and they heard about it from lots of other people, too, that it was really good, and they went, and they were like, "Wow, this is great. What good entertainment to have, you know, here in Hancock County." It's like, you know, they, so, kudos to the whole, everyone involved in that. They did a great job.
Mr. Newitt?
Jim Newitt, from the middle school, and I saw the show, too, and I got to mention the pit was really good.
Oh.
At Ellsworth Middle School, today was report card day, it was supposed to be yesterday. We got snowed out, so today the report cards went home. This is the first time we have gone standards-based grading with all of our unified art subjects, so that's four different subjects where kids will get a 1 through 4 grade as opposed to a 0 to 100 grade. So we're look, we'll be looking for feedback on that from parents. It was the first time also that we put our habits of work grade on the report card as well, so parents will get a view as to, you know, their collaborative worker, quality worker, and responsible citizen categories, and a rating of 1 to 4 in those categories. We also sent home the rubric with the kids, so parents can use that as a guide. Last week was pretty cool. We had four Apple consultants meet with our 7th and 8th grade students on two different days to do a MLTI boot camp, and our kids rotated through four different stations to learn various applications, from movies to, I won't be able to think of the four things, but, you know, the kids I talked to really enjoyed old gaming, I should remember that, because they could programming, some program called Scratch, I think it's called, and, but it was well-received by the students and the staff. Our winter concert is tomorrow night at 6:30, beginner band, concert band, and chorus will be performing. Today was day one of auditions for our annual talent show. We always do that the Friday before Christmas break, and it's so, for me, it's fun, because kids that I just see, and they don't say "Boo," all of a sudden you give them a microphone, and they can sing. It's, it's pretty cool. So, we look forward to that show. In co-curricular news, we also had a drama production. Our fall play was Seussical Junior, and that went off very, very well. Talk about a nice collaboration between the high school and middle school. The set, or the backdrop, I should say, was painted by a high school student, which was wonderful. And then the show that Jasmine Ireland directed was a lot of fun for the kids. And we even ran that on a Saturday matinee after two shows on a Thursday and Friday, and it was nice to see the turnout for that. Auditions are tomorrow for show choir, that starts right up. Charlie Brown is the show, and we'll see how that plays out, literally. Winter sports season is underway. We have four ball teams, two cheerleader teams, eighty-two kids are involved, so it's a lot of good involvement there. And the chess team met last week for the first time in a meet. They've been practicing for a couple of weeks, and we have seventeen, excuse me, twenty-seven students on our chess team. So it's fun to fill the cafeteria. We always schedule it during ballgame days, because the cheerleaders don't need the cafeteria for practice. So when we have ball teams going, chess team going, it's a busy place. And in parent news, I'd just like to thank all those parents who came out and walked in the parade. For the younger kids that walked, they do need their parents, because I sure don't want to hurt them myself, and to have the parents there assisting and singing was great, and credit to Francis Kellogg, our elementary music teacher, who coordinated a gentleman to rig up a stereo system in the back of his car, so it was blasting the Christmas songs as we sang them. It was just a lot of fun. Any questions?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Amy Peterson-Roper. So I have quite a bit of school news to talk about tonight. The first one is that Ellsworth Elementary Middle School was invited to, from the main Department of Education, to be part of a literacy pilot. It's a K-3 literacy pilot that is, comes with iPads and an instructional coach. The purpose of it is to increase literacy achievement in students, and we, we know that that's the most important thing that we can be doing right now, is really talking to kids about how, not only to read, but also how to integrate what they're reading into everything else that they're doing. It comes with a literacy coach that will come into our school three to six times. We're a pretty large school. We're the largest school that they've chosen, so I think we'll have the literacy coach the most, and we're very excited for this opportunity. So, we are building a K-3 literacy leadership team, and we're hoping that the devices will be in the teachers' hands before the holidays, and we will be putting them in children's hands. So in kindergarten and first grade, every child will have an iPad, and in second and third grade, they'll be sharing iPads. And we're hoping by the end of January, that will be happening, and by the end of March, we will have a suite of apps that have been vetted, that really have to do with good teaching. So we're very excited about it. We had our perfect attendance for the first trimester. We know it's really difficult. Kids get sick, and so we do this three times. So if you don't get the first trimester, you can get the second or the third. We had seventy-five students who had perfect attendance for the first trimester, and they all got a little green bracelet at the assembly. We also had our Vacation Reading Challenge, and we had forty-four percent of our kids who read over the November break. Another one's coming up in December, and I've been going into classrooms when, well, one of the things they get to do is they got the principal pick. And so, every classroom who, who, all the children in each classroom who participated, their names went into a basket, one was drawn, and they came down to me, and they chose the book that I was going to read for this month. And so as I've been going into classrooms and reading, we've been talking about, "It's okay if you didn't do it this month, you can do it in December," and "Three is better than none, and two is better than none, and one is better than none," because at the end, all their names are going into a girl basket and a boy basket at each grade level, and they are going to get a new bike. So whoever's name is chosen out of that. And we would like to thank the Ellsworth Masons, I don't know if I say it right, Legonia Lodge Number Forty, for helping to support this book for bikes. And it's pretty exciting, and the kids are excited about it. So, Vacation Reading Challenge is coming up, and we really want to hit that, over that fifty percent, so all you have to do is read six days out of the nine, and you get it. Our progress reports, as Jim has just mentioned, they're called report cards at the middle level, but we call them progress reports at the elementary level, and they came home. All of the benchmarks that are listed on that report card are the end-of-the-year benchmarks. Some of them have not been assessed yet, so it has NYA. Do not be upset if you see a lot of NYAs, it's just the first trimester. And if you see twos, it means that they're developing, and there's plenty of opportunities for them to retake that assessment for the end of the school year. Everything at the K-4 level is standard-based at this point, and we're pretty excited about it, and the kids are doing a great job, as are the teachers. And last, on school news, we were also, the Cole Museum, every year, we've been participating in bringing children to the Cole's Transportation Museum, particularly 4th grade, and 7th grade goes as well. And we've gotten throughout the course of the last few years, things like a smart board or projectors for, or, what do you call those? The things that, what is that? Duck cameras? And this year, they are offering us twenty-five to fifty Kindle fires to be put in our library, and it comes with an upload of up to twenty-five books each. And so we're pretty excited about that, and we think that that just goes right along with our sort of integrating literacy and technology. For PTF news, we had our annual Hands Across Ellsworth. It was our tenth annual. We had K through 5 children passing food. There were pictures in the Ellsworth American. I think we had four hundred and fifty pounds of food, and that was really exciting, and it's always just so nice for kids to be participating in thinking about their community. We had our movie night on Friday night. There were a lot of children. I'd like to thank Tim McCleskey for stepping in for me. I was not able to be there, but it was a great time, and the PTF sold pizza and other baked goods, and they made $500, which is going to our fencing that Dave Norwood is doing. And last, we have our holiday gifting, which is on December 22nd. This will be the third annual time that we do that. It's a time where children, we've gotten donations from parents, but mostly from teachers and staff members, and kids can go around and pick a gift for their brother or sister or mom or dad or grandma or grandpa or whoever. They get to choose one, and then they get to bring it in and have it wrapped. And so, that's going to be happening on the 22nd, and if you would like to come, come on and volunteer and help do it. You see a lot of smiles. Any questions?
Yes, when would you like all your donations of items?
Anytime. As they come in, I am sorting them, and so the conference room has every box, and anytime, I'd love to have them.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Good evening. Amy Bowles, Hancock County Technical Center. The first part of my report is HCTC Gives Back. I listed for you some of the activities some of our different programs have been involved in this month or is upcoming. We had a lot of our National Technical Honor Society students volunteer at the Points at a Ball this past weekend, helping with setting up, working the event, and then tearing down the next day. Our early childhood education students are really excited to attend a multi-generational party at the Moore Centers. This is the first time we're going to do this. Friends in Action are bringing together seniors from their group, and some of the preschool students from the Y will be coming, and then our early childhood students and all three generations will be coming together to do holiday activities and decorate gingerbread cookies that our culinary students will make. Our annual holiday buffet that I hope you'll all attend is Wednesday, December 21st, from 11:30 to 1:30. We already have a ton of reservations. If you're interested in attending with a group larger than four, I highly recommend you call Liz tomorrow and make your reservation. The following day, we've done this the last several years, the kindergarten students from EEMS will be coming up. We'll take half of the classrooms in the morning and half of the classrooms in the afternoon. I give them a tour of the building and talk about jobs, basically, with them in each of the programs, and then they go into the cafeteria and decorate gingerbread cookies. As always, the kindergartners will be decorating our holiday buffet with making personalized placemats for people to enjoy while they eat, and we'll have hung gingerbread all around the cafeteria. Finally, multimedia technology program has been asked by the Ellsworth Fire Department to help them create a educational video for five to 10 minutes, kind of outlining the life of a firefighter and what the job looks like. So they'll be spending time interviewing members of the fire department and taking photographs over the course of this year to help them make a promotional video. They're hoping to have that done by May. On Friday, November 18th, we had over fifty students attend the ABC Craft Championships. This is an event that takes place every year in Augusta, where major corporations, construction companies, welders, businesses bring in equipment, simulators, and it's a job fair at the same time, and kids get to mingle and go around. Heather Pelletier, my student services coordinator, attended the craft championship breakfast beforehand, which is typically for policymakers, legislators, and CTE administrators. She went this year, and little did we know that Brian Langley was being honored at the event for his dedication to career technical education, and we posted that picture on Facebook. At our November HCTC advisory meeting, we've been talking for a couple of months about a possible new program at HCTC that will be housed at MDI High School, and that is a marine service technology program. And at our advisory meeting, our board voted unanimously to approve that. And last evening, I went to MDI High School to present the program and HCTC. They had me do kind of an overview of what HCTC is. I gave them a breakdown of towns that their students are from. It's the first time they've ever had me, so it was actually a really good thing. They have twenty-one members on their board, so it was very different. And I did a presentation about HCTC, and at the end presented the idea of the new program. And it was unanimously approved by MDI High School. So our hope is that we would start this program in the fall, and students from all of our high schools would access the marine service technology program at MDI High School. Tonight, as we speak, we have two Student of the Months being honored at the Rotary Dinner. As you know, every other month, they honor two Students of the Month for CTE, and this year, we're honoring Hunter Eaton from D.R. L. Stonington High School, who is in our country carpentry program, and Ethan Kane from Ellsworth High School is being honored as the welding technology student of the month. So they're currently at that presentation. Finally, not included in my report, I don't know why I left it out, but last week, my new biomedical instructor, Sarah Petrulis, and I did a presentation to the Economic Development Corps. A couple, few of you were in attendance, and I thought that went very well. Business leaders from around the greater Ellsworth community, as well as city council members, Tammy Moat from finance, and then Mr. Higgins attended as well, and we did an overview and talked a little bit about HCTC, as well as the biomedical program, what's going well, what some shortcomings are, what we need to move it forward. And I thought it was a really productive evening and conversation. Any questions?
I was fortunate enough to attend that last item that you talked about, and as a guest, along with Brenda and Mr. Higgins, and the feedback I heard afterwards from a bunch of people on that board was very positive, and they were very impressed with everything that's going on there. A lot of them didn't really know what's, you know, what HCTC is doing.
I know, which still amazes me.
Yeah, well, but it was, you know, it's a story that needs to be told, and, you know, so, but that was, that was a good place to tell the story, and thank you for doing so.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Annie Sargent, and I'm the Director of the Adult Ed Program. And do you guys have in front of you the report? Because there's this piece that I think it's important, would be important for you to see, and I have multiple copies, and I'll hand it out if that would be helpful. So our spring programs are in place for, so that's very exciting. Marilyn Starling and I are right in the midst of putting together our catalog, and we have our ongoing popular courses and also a sampling of new classes, including woodlot management, writing an effective press release. One of them is called "So You Think You Might Want to Be an Entrepreneur." We have an art history class, two sessions of it, making a YouTube video, improv theater, and then our Office Skills Model Office program. So we have, and we also have a new collaboration with an, with a, an organization out of Brunswick called the Academy of Medical Professions, so that we'll be able to offer through videoconferencing some medical courses, because they're in demand and hard to put together. So we're excited to experiment with that. I did a lot of research with colleagues around the state with the program, and it doesn't cost us anything. We earn money for students who take the classes at our site, and we earn money for people who heard about it through our site. And so I figured it was not an ideal way of learning for all students, but it might fit the bill for some folks, so that's exciting. We have a lot of requests for daytime enrichment classes, and we're limited in terms of space, and so I'm a kind of, those of you who know me know that I'm a little bit of a "build it and they will come" person, and I've decided to put the brakes on that a little bit, and really this spring builds some capacity for sites within the community, so that we can be a little bit more planful about those classes. So, we're excited about that, and if anybody knows of any sites within the community, it would be great to hear about those. We're really reaching out now. The first couple of years, I was really focused, as was your, you wanted me to focus on the academic program, and now I'm starting to turn my attention to our workforce training and enrichment program. And so, we've been starting to reach out to get more ideas, and we're doing that in a variety of ways, but I have posted a survey on Facebook and on our website and have distributed it to some folks. In fact, we sent it out to all of the staff of Ellsworth School Department and have gotten some of our ideas of classes that are happening this spring from that. So, one of the things I love about adult education is that we can be very responsive. It's very fun. We're also going to be going to scale with enrichment course evaluations starting this spring. We've been piloting it over the last year. And what you have as the attachment is using Google Forms. Are you impressed, April? We have, we're using that to do our enrichment course evaluations, and the, what you have here is not a lot of numbers. There are only twenty-four people who have submitted this so far, but I thought it was nice for you to see, you know, get a ballpark idea of the kind of statistics that we have. So, a little more than half of the people are taking an adult ed class for the first time. This course met everybody's expectations. This, I, I literally cut and pasted this. I, that was the one issue with the Google Form that I had trouble with, but, so, one of the options on this, did this court meet your expectation, was it did not meet it, and that wasn't the case for any of the classes, which is pretty impressive. And a hundred percent of the people would take the class, take another class from that instructor. I was really curious, what's the most convenient time for classes, and that's sort of a little bit all over the place. And then again, how did you find out about the course? People are still using the paper catalog. It's a big investment. I think it's a good way to promote what we do, but I wanted to make sure that it was a good way to get the word out. And on the second page, again, I cut and pasted, and apparently I didn't do so well in kindergarten, because they aren't, it's not very straight. But you can see here the, the kind of information that we can get. And I would say that there, it was just a couple of, one course actually that people said was fair, and all the rest were positive, so I was pretty excited about that. But again, I'm mostly showing that to you so that you can see what kind of data we can gather. So we're looking forward to doing that. We have a plan to do it online for people who can, and then we'll, we have a, we have a system that we're experimenting with to do some paper ones as well. So, as much as anything, it's a really great way to get new ideas for courses as well. So we're excited about that. And then we're really, I've talked about the Office Skills Program many times. I just, one more plug, we're actually going to try to really start March 1st, a model office. So we're really looking for businesses right within downtown Ellsworth, businesses and employers who might have some real activities that our Office Skills students could do, so that they have the self-efficacy experience of actually making a difference. So if anybody knows of anybody who might be interested in that, I'd love to hear from The only other thing I wanted to say is our course catalog will be on our website by, hopefully before Christmas. Otherwise, I'll be working on it over Christmas vacation. And then it, our plan is to get it to hit the streets the first week of January. We like to get it out after the New Year, so it doesn't get lost in bustle of the holidays. So we should be out the end of the first week in January. This was a real focus on enrichment, which we haven't done much, so I hope it's helpful. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Corman-Ramos. I'm the Correct
Our updates start with our recently passed November Professional Development Days. On November 21st and 22nd, we held our Professional Development Days for teachers and ed techs. We hosted Anita McCafferty and Jeff Bowdre from the University of Southern Maine for both days. They worked with teachers on assessment for learning. They shared strategies and rubric development with teachers in our efforts towards implementing proficiency-based instruction. They provided numerous examples of scaffolds and graphic organizers in a hallway gallery walk. You could walk down the halls in several different directions, and they brought many different kinds of examples for teachers to replicate and take pictures of, and to, you know, get ideas for personalizing on their own, and how to help students have ownership of their learning and understand the building blocks, the skills and concepts they're working on. The art and music teachers participated in the Maine Arts Leadership Initiative, which was hosted this year by the Ellsworth High School on one of the days. And then they joined the Assessment for Learning Program on Tuesday. And also, our physical education teachers had a unique opportunity to work with Owen Cassidy, who is an outdoor guide and physical education instructor from Camp Beach Cliff during day one as well. Special Education Department, Lynn Maddox, provided two very well-received days. We sent out surveys, and they were very appreciated, of personalized training for all the special ed ed techs on the effective implementation of IEPs or individualized educational plans. I personally was able to talk to some of the ed techs since then, and they so appreciated being able to have training that was developed just for them, and the kinds of situations that they come across. Often, in the past, they've been included in training for teachers, and some of it applies and some of it doesn't, depending on where they are. And just talking to them anecdotally, they were really pleased to have something that was so focused on them. Lynn created a really wonderful program, and they were very pleased. And on our post-program surveys, the teachers as well reported they were happy to have time to receive tailored professional development to their needs, and they also were given time to work and collaborate together, and think about what they were learning, and come up with ideas for next steps in the classroom. I'm really pleased that we have three new opportunities in our schools due to some unexpected grant money with Title I. And so for the remainder of the year, I'm really pleased to welcome Candace Bray, a reading consultant with a career of experience working with students and teachers, to our regular education side of the middle school, to support teachers over the coming months. She and I will be meeting with ELA teachers in the coming week to talk with them about their challenges, their victories in teaching reading, so that she can support them with resources and her time in providing students with the tools they need to be successful readers and writers. Ms. Bray's been working with the special education teachers and Lynn Maddox during the beginning of this year, and now will be able to support the regular education program as well. I'm really looking forward to this, because this will combine with the K-3 Literacy Project that we'll now be a part of. So we're going to have a heightened amount of instructional coaching throughout grades K through eight in literacy. And I think the two different programs will be able to complement each other and really offer our teachers a lot of support. So I think that's going to be very successful. Also, tomorrow, we'll be advertising in servingschools.com and internally to hire a math interventionist for the remainder of the years for grades K through eight. We're able to provide this service to students who our data shows could benefit from extra math support, with the hope that perhaps in the future, other funding will make this permanent. Interested applicants can find the job description probably tomorrow afternoon, and the contact information on servingschools.com. And finally, we're going to be able to introduce an instructional coaching model for the middle school, starting in January. And you'll hear some more about that from Mr. Higgins' report. Very excited, because we were able to advertise and interview a candidate who will be able to work with our middle school teachers, and again, talk to them about what their challenges are, and offer them support in differentiation, in helping give tiered instruction to children who have different needs in the classroom, and be able to help them align their assessments, so that they can begin to move more, even closer, to proficiency-based instruction, and helping children work on the standards. And combined with the assessment training that we just received, really be able to have students, when you walk in the room, have them know exactly where they are, what they're working towards, and the skills that they need to move forward. Any questions?
Rachel, can you talk a little more about what coaching looks like? Do they, do coaches come into the classroom and observe, and then after class give feedback? Is this something where teachers spend days out of the classroom and work with coaches?
So in the K-3 Literacy Pilot, the instructional coach, as Amy said, will be coming to our school, I think, four to six times over the course of the rest of the year, and, as you said, be able to come and speak with us as administrators, and speak with the teachers about the needs and the challenges, and then be able to push into the classroom and work with them there. So there will be almost no time out of the classroom for the teachers, which is one of the things I like most about this model, is that they won't be leaving the kids to learn something in kind of an alternate environment, and then try to figure out how to make it work in their real-life setting. These are coaches who will be coming into the classroom, maybe they'll model a lesson, or model an idea, or they'll, you know, teach side-by-side for a few minutes and give them some ideas, get to see what kind of students they're working with, and the challenges and the needs the kids have. So it'll be real-time, you know, real-place instruction. And we'll be having the same model in the upper grades as well. So we're really working towards models of instructional coaching where the students, where the teachers are not leaving. We want the kids with their teachers as much as possible. Often, when coaches who don't know a school district very well will come in and say, "This is a great model. You should try this." And the teacher's first reaction might be, "You don't know the students I have. We have students who go to band in the middle, or we have students who have these needs, or you don't know, and so this won't work just like that. It's not a cookie cutter thing." And so what we really wanted to do is have models where the coach would be able to come in and observe, and see what the challenges are, and see where the strengths are, which kids are leaders, which kids they can leverage to work with other students, that kind of thing. And also, one of the other pieces about the instructional coaching model is that we are going to be able to provide substitutes for maybe 15 to 20 minutes, where a teacher could go see another teacher who has a strength and a particular challenge they're having. Maybe they have a challenge in, you know, management of multiple different groups, working at different things, and the coach has been able to observe another teacher who's very good at that particular aspect of working in the classroom. So the teachers could watch each other in real time and bring that back to their classroom. But we are, our goal in this coaching is to really minimize the amount of time that teachers are out of the classroom.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's my turn. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, we'd like to welcome new and returning school board members, and like to introduce, first and foremost, returning member, Marcia Jude, who finished a three-year term and was reappointed by the remaining board members to fill a one-year vacancy. So welcome back, Marcia.
Thank you.
I would like to welcome Joanne Avery, even though this is your second meeting, Joanne. Welcome publicly.
Thank you.
Joanne is a former, longtime teacher at Ellsworth High School, and has joined the board and was elected this past fall. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And Ellsworth School Department does have a student representative, and that will be senior Hayden Sattler. And unfortunately, Hayden is not able to attend this evening, as he's off competing with the high school swim team. But welcome to all of you, and we look forward to working with you. Next item on my agenda is something that's not on the printed copy that you received, but I would like to echo what Mr. Clifford said with regard to our student behavior at the job fair. And Mr. Clifford reported that many of the presenters commented on how well-behaved our students were. I also had an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Svek about her recent trip to Quebec with her students, and some of the feedback that she received was very much the same, that Ellsworth High School students are very well behaved when they're out in public. So not only do we have our students representing our school and community very well with our local business population, but also internationally. So I think it speaks well for our students and what's going on in our schools. Another item that's not quite as exciting, but very important, we'll talk a little bit about water testing results. I know many of you are familiar with what happened a couple of years ago in Flint, Michigan, with lead in water, and how some other schools in Maine voluntarily tested their water and found there to be a presence of lead in their water. Well, Ellsworth School Department was being proactive as well, and opted to work with Public Works Director Larry Wilson and Water Department Staff Member Peter Austin, to take a look at what Ellsworth schools have for infrastructure, and determine that we should do a voluntary test of our drinking water in the Ellsworth schools as well. Now, it's important for members of the board, members of the audience, and members of the public to know that school systems who have a water source that is from a municipal water source, like Ellsworth, are not required to test like schools that are on wells. However, given what's happened in other communities, given what's happened nationally, we opted to conduct tests voluntarily. So over the past month, we have had water sources for all of our sources that are used for consumption, water fountains, and in food preparation, tested by the Maine CDC Health and Environmental Testing Lab. And the results of the testing with our water is satisfactory for consumption and well below the limits of lead in the water. We were confident that that was going to be the outcome, because in two of our schools, all of the fixtures were lead-free fixtures. The one school that we had a little bit of a concern about was HCTC, and even that HCTC with older fixtures, the levels there were, again, well below maximum contamination level. So for citizens out there, the water in Ellsworth schools is safe to drink, and we'll be working with Mr. Wilson to talk about how frequently that we want to test, even though we're not required to, even though our voluntary test proved to support what we believed. I believe that the Department of Education is going to be mandating water testing even in systems like ours, so we're going to be ahead of the curve on that as well. Mother Nature did not cooperate for my next item. The desire was to have no school cancellations prior to tonight's meeting, so that we could remind parents about how they can learn about school closures. But even though Mother Nature didn't cooperate, we can still remind parents. Our notification system primarily is going to be through Infinite Campus, and that will be through communicated closure via phone, email, or text. And if parents did not get a notification for this most recent storm, we ask them to contact the school and update their contact information. We'll also use the traditional means of notifying families of closures, using television stations, WLBC and WABI, radio stations, WNSX*977 FM, WZON62AM, and Town Square Media stations, which are Q106.5, 107.3, 95.7, and AM 1370 WDEA. As many of you have read in the newspaper, the first regular session of the 128th Maine Legislature convened on December 7th, 2016. While cloture is not expected to be until December 30th, 2016, and a listing of education-related bills has not been made available, however, it is expected there will be proposed bills around regional and cooperative programming and efficiency initiatives, which is something I know those of you who attended the Fall Conference talked about in a regional meeting, school choice, once again, amendments to the educational surtax referendum that was passed in the recent election, and of course, funding for general purpose aid to education. With regard to one of those items, I would like to report to the board that Hancock County superintendents are already engaged in discussions about some potential cooperative efforts that may take place over the next couple of years. And as we move forward with fleshing those out, we'll be coming back to our individual boards, and perhaps collective boards, to talk about some of those. The other piece that's going to happen in the legislative session will be discussion of the ongoing transition from what used to be known as No Child Left Behind to Every Student Succeeds. And I will be providing updates to members of the board and the public on progress of these bills as they become available for review and discussion. We have a number of new staff and transferring staff I'd like to report on. First of all, Keith Wheaton, who was a custodian at EHS, has transferred to become a bus driver. Vicki Clausen is a new custodian at Ellsworth High School. Max Grover is serving as an assistant swim coach at EHS. And Erin Pinkney is a new freshman boys' basketball coach at EHS. And we have a number of letters of resignation and/retirement this evening to report to you. First of all, we have, and this has been publicized in the media, Rick Roberts, who's been involved with the high school softball program for 18 years, is retiring from coaching at the school, but he's going to continue to teach students how to pitch, something that's a passion of his. Lori Madala, who has been teaching for 26 years in grade 7 at EMS, will be retiring at the end of this year. Chuck Brooks, custodian at EMS, who's been there, he's put 42-plus years, will be retiring in September. And Laura Rudolph, I don't think any of us thought she would ever retire, but Laura Rudolph will be retiring at the end of this school year as well. These people have contributed many years of great service to the students and the schools in the city, and we appreciate their effort. And we still have a couple of vacancies, a special education position at EMS. And I spoke with Mr. Clifford again earlier today, we still have a mathematics position open at the high school, unless you found somebody earlier today, Mr. Clifford? Nobody today? Okay. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
With regard to water testing, is there, I understand it's voluntary.
Yes.
Is there a plan to do this on a regular schedule, or?
That's what we're working on with Larry Wilson. You know, Larry used to be the superintendent of the Water Department before he became Public Works Director. And we're discussing what would be an appropriate proposal to bring forth to the board. From my perspective, I'm thinking, at the very least, on an annual basis. The tests are a small investment, but certainly to ensure that your water is safe for consumption, it's well worth the investment. But we're still fleshing that out. But I did want to report the results of the lead this evening, so I thought that was very important.
Any other questions? Thank you.
With regard to yesterday's school closure, I don't think anyone would, I know there's a lot of second guessing that goes into this, and Jack Turkop wrote an essay that was published many, many years ago about that. You can get second guessed either way, but I don't think anyone second guessed the decision yesterday to close the schools, given the weather conditions that ended up prevailing throughout the day, so.
Thank you. I have to say, it was probably one of the easier decisions yesterday.
I was very happy with my phone dinged up by 30.
Yeah, and in regards to the announcements, too, if you sign up to get notification, I was up, and first I got my phone buzzed, because I got an email about, and then within seconds, my home, my landline at my home was ringing, and within seconds after that, I got another note, I got a text message on my cell phone. So all within like a 60-second period. So it's very effective, very, you know, just, if you choose to be notified, you can very easily get notified promptly and effectively, so, yeah, it's a good system. Thank you.
Item H, committee reports. Policy committees on that. Item I, old business, there's none. And J, new business.
Well, we, once again, as we did last month, the presentation that we were trying to line up for this month did not materialize, so we will go back to the drawing board. We do have a number of presentations that involve school department staff and students that we will bring forth, starting in January. So I apologize for that, but this time of the year, sometimes it's difficult.
Thank you. School Board Reorganizational Meeting. Nominations for Board Chair.
I'd like to nominate Brenda Thomas to be the Board Chair.
Second.
I have to ask this question. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none.
Any discussion?
Well, you had the nomination, the next step would be, and actually, since you're the nominee, I probably should do it, Mrs. Thomas.
Yeah, go ahead.
So is there a motion to approve the election of Brenda Thomas as Board Chair?
I make a motion to approve the election of Brenda Thomas as Board Chair for 2016-17.
I second that.
If a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, would entertain a vote? All in favor? Opposed? Absteem? Now we'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mrs. Thomas.
Nominations for Board Vice Chair.
I nominate Paul Marcosian for Board Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Is that Marcia?
Yeah.
Any further nominations? Don't have a motion.
Can I make a motion?
Yep, you may.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the election of Paul Marcosian as Board Vice Chair for the 2016, 2016-17 school year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All those abstained? Consideration of Overnight Out-of-State Trip. I believe that's you.
I'll have copies, because I may. I'd like one, please. Thank you.
I'll take one, too, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't get a call? None of you did?
None of us did. I've wrote this. We got it, I think.
I think we got it on here. I think we got it on here.
Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Corson. I'm one of the one-and-a-half Spanish teachers at Ellsworth High School. My 10th year doing this, and I'm still nervous to present. So, my proposal is basically the same. I'd like to take the kids to Boston, get a little flamenco dancing, some Spanish tapas, little Quincy Market. So, basically, every year, I take them for the weekend, and I'll go over the itinerary in a minute, but basically, the kids come home and they say that the best thing that they've learned is how to use the public transportation system in Boston and how to put up with other people that use the public transportation system in Boston. The price went up this year because in the past few years, we haven't been able to see a show, and there is not a flamenco show that weekend either. So, I'm going to try to take them to the Blue Man Group. I took them in 2010 to the Blue Man Group, we had a blast. So, I'm going to try to take them to the Friday 7:00 PM show because it's early enough so that we can get back to the hotel before the riffraff comes out late at night. So, the price is $325. It includes everything except for subway fare, three lunches, dinner on Friday night, and any shopping that they want to do. As far as fundraising, we still have lanyards from five years ago. We have about 10 left. We're selling them for $5 apiece. Anybody wants a lanyard? We had a bake sale on 10/18 at one of the soccer games. We raised $186 in like an hour and a half. It was great, the kids had fun. We're in the middle of our jam basket raffle from the Bar Harbor Jam Company. The owner's my husband, so he owes me some favors. So, he donated, donated a basket, so the kids are selling raffle tickets for that. Also, the Monday night basketball game, Mr. Frost is letting us do the 50-50 raffle for that, so we'll be doing, we'll be doing that. I, I will, the first 16 students to bring in their full permission packet and the $25 deposit get to go. It was 20 students, and I brought it down to 16 because I had all 20 go last year, and it was great, they were well-behaved, they were wonderful. But at night, trying to get all 20 kids on the T, particularly the green line, made me a little nervous, so I cut it down to 16 kids to make it more manageable, to smoosh them all like sardines on that green line for two stops until we can get on the blue line. Preparedness of students, I, I talk about flamenco in all my classes, and we'll do some preparation in Spanish club and evaluations, and all teachers at EHS will be shop-roading the trip. If you turn to the next page, it's the itinerary. We stay at the Embassy Suites, and they actually notified me last week. They, they emailed me, the woman who I usually go with emailed me, and she's like, "Are you guys coming? This is kind of late, I need to reserve rooms." So, if you guys approve this trip, I have a fax ready to go and sign. I got to send it out first thing in the morning to, to reserve the rooms. Dinner and shopping at the Galleria Mall on Friday night before the Blue Man Group. I usually say to the kids, "If you want to eat at the Cheesecake Factory, meet me there at 4 o'clock for an early dinner, and by 3:58, they're all there and picking out what cheesecake they want to eat." So, it's not required, but they usually all end up there. Some of them have more than one piece of cheesecake. And then, in the morning of Saturday, March 11th, is when we do our flamenco dance workshop with Ramon de los Reyes, and that's where they would wear their Spanish club shirt, and I'm hoping we can get that 10 to 11:30 time slot because it really is perfect, because then we can go to Quincy Market for some lunch, and then back to the hotel to dress up, and then dinner at Tosca, which is a tapas restaurant. It's delicious, they feed us until we're literally bent over, walking out of the, walking out of the restaurant, and it's really reasonable what they give us for food. And we had a vegetarian last year, and they made sure she didn't eat any, you know, they made sure to make her something special. We have a shellfish allergy, Mrs. Cutney, shellfish allergy, and they made sure to keep the shrimp away from her and give her a special dish. They would miss school Friday to travel, to travel down there. I really like to take the 7:00 AM Concord Trailways bus because you're guaranteed to fit a big group on that bus. And last year, I bought the tickets in advance, and it worked out great. They knew we were coming, they had tickets, it was wonderful. And on the last page are some pictures of last year. The top picture, that was my first picture with a selfie stick, they teased me. Ramon, our flamenco instructor, is in the upper left-hand corner, little old man, he's so sweet. And that's the kids having fun with their castanets. He takes the time to make sure they all have castanets, to teach them how to do that. The second-to-last picture, Mr. Frost was in Boston and tried to avoid us but couldn't. So, he, we were going inbound, and he was going outbound, and he snapped that picture. They were, "Mr. Frost, Mr. Frost," and he snapped that picture. And then, of course, candids, lots of candids to and from the T station. I rambled. Are there any questions?
Do we get a demonstration?
No.
I think it's great that you're willing to do this, Lindsay.
Thanks. I have so much fun. I can go to Boston by myself, I mean, I, you know, but I just, I love going with students. They're so much fun. I love watching them learn how to navigate a city.
It's a wonderful experience.
Sounds like a great experience.
Yeah.
Are we looking for motion? I motion that we approve the planned trip for the Spanish club to Boston.
I second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Get that fax going.
Acknowledge acceptance of grant.
Just to take a brief moment, did you all get this included in your packet? Okay. Sometimes when you have to cut things out of the budget in a previous year, you have good fortune, and this happens to be one of those occasions. As you all remember, we were looking to approve a unified schools basketball program through the budget process last year, and unfortunately, that fell by the wayside. Mr. Frost, Mr. Clifford did apply for a grant through Special Olympics Maine, and as you can see, we've been awarded that grant, and we've accepted it. So, we've come here tonight to ask the board to acknowledge the acceptance of that grant. And so, you know, the $2,500 will cover the cost of coach, of travel, of officials, and I believe we need to come up with maybe $300 or $400 out of the local budget, which we can absorb to make the program work.
I move that we acknowledge the acceptance of Special Olympics Maine Incorporated grant as presented.
I second that. Discussion? Is this just for basketball?
This is just for basketball. The season takes place at the, after the conclusion of the regular basketball season, and students who play basketball are not eligible, but it's a team composed of students identified with special needs and other students, and there are rules about how much time each student can play and participate in the game and how many points each can score. But it's a competitive league, and I know in speaking with one of our athletic directors from another school last year, we talked about this during the budget process, it's really a fantastic opportunity for kids. And you heard Mr. Newitt talk earlier, when the talent show comes about, there are students that he sees in the school that he doesn't expect that he would hear anything from demonstrating some talents. But this is an opportunity for students that you may not expect something like that from, who have a world of opportunity and really have a great opportunity and a great time. So, I think this is a fantastic opportunity for Ellsworth High School.
So, when you say league, Dan, you mean, this is other schools in the area?
Yeah, there's actually a regular season and a tournament, just like you have with the basketball season that just started this past week.
Any other questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Nomination and confirmation of new staff.
Yes, and you heard Rachel talk a little bit earlier that I would speak a little bit about this. As Rachel mentioned in her report, with some unanticipated grant carryover funds in Title One, we've got the opportunity to do some things that we wanted to do in the local budget. One of them is a math interventionist, which Rachel talked about. The other one is to use those funds to have an instructional coach, grades five through eight. So, we advertised for that position, knowing that we had the chance that if she was interested, had the background and experience to step into that position and really provide some benefit to our teachers. So, we're pleased to present tonight, for your consideration, a nomination of Deb Richards, who is a familiar face, as you know, she teaches in the Adult Ed Program, has been with us for a couple of years now. She has 36 years' experience in education, 25 of those years as teaching and being a reading specialist. So, this is a position that's right up her alley. She also has 10 years of administrative experience. She's been an excellent staff member since she's been here, and I'm pleased to nominate her to you for a part-time instructional coach, .5 full-time equivalent, first year's probationary contract, and it's for the balance of this year.
I make a motion to confirm the superintendent's nomination of Debbie Richards as a part-time instructional coach with a first-year probationary contract.
Second.
Discussion?
So, this is going to be a permanent position, though, right?
No, just like with the math interventionists, we have funds to support this for the balance of this school year. What we're hoping to demonstrate, and we're confident that we will, is that both of these positions are going to demonstrate the benefit by showing data, benefit to our students and our teachers. We would like to have them as positions permanently with local funding in subsequent years. You've heard us talking about K through eight. With these positions, because of the grant fund, we can't use them grades nine through 12. In an ideal world, we could make this a full-time position and have it expand K through 12.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. Welcome aboard again.
Calendar and announcements. School Board Meeting Workshop to be announced.
Well, I think the reason we put "to be announced" on here was we've had a reconfiguration of the board, and I know one of your tasks as the chair now is to determine committee membership, so that's why there's "to be announced" on committee meetings. So, we have policy that does have a list of policies that are going to need to be looked at. We also have personnel that is going to need to meet sooner rather than later because we have two of our organizations who are requesting initial meetings for collective bargaining, our teachers and ed techs. And in terms of the school board workshop, I believe the next regularly scheduled workshop would be during school vacation week. If I recall correctly, at the last board meeting, you opted to have that the following week, is that correct? To make it the day after New Year's. I wasn't certain, that's why I put "to be announced" on there.
Why don't we talk and we send an email? Is that okay to do that?
We can do that.
Okay, okay. And the same with the policy committee, once we set committee groups up.
Once we know who the members are, with people's varying schedules, there are some committees that can meet in the morning, some committees that can't.
Yeah. So, our next regular school board meeting is Tuesday, January 10th, 2017, City Hall Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. And item L is adjournment.
Having no further business, I move that we adjourn the board meeting.
I second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. It is 7:35.